We'll get started because Nate's here to offer the invocation. Nate, if you would do that, please.
Thank you, ma'am. I thank you, Councilman, for what you do. Father, thanks for just the privilege to live here. It's a great honor to be a part of this town, this city, thankful for our neighbors and businesses, school, and for our local governance. And I want you to give them wisdom to do what they need to do, help them do it rightly, justly, and may it be a benefit to us as citizens. And thank you for the privilege to have our own governance, Lord, and let us take that responsibly. Thank you for our police force, others, ambulance, fire trucks, Lord, do their jobs. Thank you for this place we get to call home. We ask in Christ's name.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
It is seven o'clock, so if I could reach the panel, I'd call the meeting to order. Thanks, Dan. Meeting is now called to order. Let's join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devon, would you take all of these? Mike Connell?
Here.
Chad Fuller?
Here.
Mindy Wobbe?
Here.
Larry Lambert?
At order.
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Neers and Hinni?
Here.
Councilmembers Larry Lambert and Steve Wallace are sitting in the room. We're looking now for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per... Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now reading an approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 2nd, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Preapproved reports and presentations. I don't believe we have any, Devon, or you, Orbin?
No.
So we'll move into public comment. Is there anyone here for a public comment? Yes, Roy, come right up. Introduce yourself, because not everybody knows you.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'm Roy Liski. Also in attendance tonight, my wife, Caitlin, and my mother, Rhonda. We own Local Roots Cannabis, and we are the recipient of the only provisional license for cannabis retail in Perry. We recently attended a planning commission meeting to give an update on our progress so far, and we were encouraged to also attend this meeting by Larry Lambert. We have begun the process of creating our business. We are making progress as fast as we can. We've invested thousands into the necessary steps of site surveying, determining boundary lines and elevation. This info is included in the document I'm going to pass around, so you can take a look. We have an architect scheduled to design the building, and we will be meeting with him in mid-March. We scheduled the architectural services months ago when we first issued our provisional license. At that time, they were scheduling out into March, so a little bit of a wait there. We've spent thousands of our own money under the assumption that we have the only license in Perry for at least the initial year. Any change to the number of licenses may impact lending. Two stores in a small town makes it less of a secure bet for lenders. The change you may be considering tonight will likely prevent us from being able to follow through on what we've started. The only license available has been granted to us because we were the only ones who followed through with the application process established by the city. We've now applied twice for this opportunity. We have already invested thousands of dollars under the assumption that the city would honor its decision, and we would be the sole cannabis shop in town for at least one year. We were counting on being first to market in Perry and using that time to establish customer loyalty and community involvement. What I'm asking of you tonight is to take no action until we have a chance for further discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roy. We appreciate you being here tonight.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else for a public comment tonight? Yes, come right up. You'll have to introduce yourself again, because not everybody...
Good evening. My name is Jeff Barker. I am... You might not be familiar with me, but I'm a little familiar with the city of Perry. I was a member of the 144 Military Police Company up in Wasso for a number of years, and on drill weekends, a friend of mine who lived in Perry would let me stay at his place, and so we would eat here and before we go off to drill. But this is my name is Jeff Barker. I own Barkford Legal, which is a law firm that specializes in helping mom and pop smaller businesses succeed in Michigan's highly regulated cannabis market. I represent Roy and Rhonda, who are the owners of Local Roots, who have a shop over in Langsberg, and they are exactly the type of client that I like to serve. They care not only about their customers and their employees, but also about ensuring the success of the communities that they are part of. Last year, they sponsored a series of concerts in Langsberg to... just to assist in the development of the downtown there. They applied that only for the... this round of licenses under the newest ordinance, but also under the original ordinance passed by the city of Perry. I were one of two people to apply for that previous license, which was... which was repealed during litigation with the Chiawasikares Coalition in the county court. They applied because they want to bring the same level of customer service and community involvement to your city of Perry. I also want to discuss, if you didn't know, we filed a motion to intervene in the litigation that's pending in federal court brought by Liberty Wellness and a resident here, bless the name of Moses, against your city. And I guess if you didn't know, we filed by a week, a motion to intervene, and we're still waiting for the judge to make a determination on that. We... I want to clarify, the Local Roots decided to intervene not to increase your legal spend, not to hinder the city at all, but... and not just to protect their own business interests. We understand that the city doesn't have unlimited resources to pay for lengthy or expensive litigation and don't have unlimited resources to engage in frivolous lawsuits of this kind. Local Roots intervened in this lawsuit, yes, protected business interest, as any, you know, well-intending businessperson would. As increasing the number of licenses available in this wonderful small town will surely have a sizable negative impact on the ability of their business to be successful. Again, they were the only ones to apply this most recent round for licenses and were approved. But also, we want to join together with the city to reduce your legal spend and be sure that the ordinance you passed, that the people wanted, remains in place. The simple truth is that, as outlined by the Attorney General's Office, the charter amendment didn't pass muster under the Home and Rules City Act, and that's why you guys decided not to implement that, following that advice from the Attorney General's Office. You didn't deny any one of their due process under the law, because the ordinance or the charter amendment that was passed by the voters was not passed appropriately because of the complexity of that charter amendment. And the issue with the license award method via lottery under the... under MERCMA, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, that's the Adult Use Act, or something called the REC Act, because no other entries applied to the license, and so neither the plaintiffs, Liberty Wellness or Mr. Moses, have the ability to challenge that ordinance in court. With this in mind, Local Roots and I have some ideas to challenge the lawsuit brought by Liberty Wellness that we'd like to present to the city attorney, as well as we have a way to limit your exposure to legal fees. I know you're considering working with Miller Canfield, and I know that they have a hefty legal bill to get started. And while it may seem as though this well-heeled group of outsiders has unlimited money to spend to just keep moving forward with the litigation and that their success is inevitable, that doesn't seem to be true. I searched the state of Michigan's database of active licenses, and Liberty Wellness does not have any license outside of their two girl licenses in the city of Camp Casco. Further, the other litigation brought not by... not by Liberty Wellness, but by Chiawasikares Coalition, Oldwood Cares Coalition, Inum Cares Coalition, a number of these other shadow money groups that they funded, not a single one of them has ruled in favor for those people, for the coalitions. There was one favorable decision in Inum County, however, that was reversed at the Court of Appeals. So they have not been successful in litigation, except for they have similar to what the city of Perry is considering as negotiated settlements in those cities, but to my knowledge, according to the state records, they did not... they have not followed through on their commitments actually open a facility in any of these towns that they've sued. So if you do go into a closed session to confer with the communications from the city attorney to discuss settlement negotiations, we ask that you keep this in mind. We ask that you delay approving these settlement negotiations until we're allowed to intervene, and we look forward to having you seat at the table for any future negotiations as we work together to determine a fair process toward the city's single retail license. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to assist there, but if not, I'll return to my seat.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for a public comment? Devon, do we have communication?
I just want to let Council know there was a couple of items that were given to you in your packet, and it was regarding the Chiawasik economic development. There was an email that the mayor wanted to make sure that you guys had, and also there was an email of some background on Alyssa Slotkin. And I just want to make sure that you guys received that. And that's another person.
Mayor, reports... the report that I have, I'll address when we get down into our new business, if indeed we do those things. We'll see how the weather's looking. But we'll move on now to our committee reports, and I'm suggesting perhaps that Parks goes first, because Megan's here to assist with that report. Right? Okay. Parks.
Do I? Nice meeting today.
Well, just so everybody knows again, I said that in our last meeting, when the Parks meeting was, but I will say it again. It is Tuesday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM, right here at Council Chambers.
And I have two updates for you. The first one is a positive one. The final recreation plan has been approved by the DNR and is in effect until December 31st, 2027. This makes us eligible to submit for the Natural Resources Trust Fund, Land and Water Conservation Fund, and/or the Recreation Passport Grant options.
Very good.
Yeah. So that was good news. A couple of these things are open until April 1st. If we were going to apply, they do require a 25% to 50% match, so it's something the committee will have to look at with our existing funds, if it's something we want to pursue this year. And then it is quite a lengthy process. You apply by April, you don't get a determination until October, November, and then you have two years to complete the project after that. In not-so-exciting news, we did not receive our Spark grant that we applied for, for the Jubilee project. While it was disappointing, the stakes were high. There were over 460 applications requesting more than $280 million. Only 5% of applications received funding. I believe it was 21 of them for about $14.2 million. There will be another round of applications sometime later this year. There's not an exact date yet. Again, it'll only be 50 only, $50 million, and we can assume just as much competition. We're supposed to get scoring and feedback by the end of March, and then we can use that if we reapply.
Very good. Well, you made the effort, and I would encourage you to reapply when you can. Keep throwing it up against the wall, maybe it'll stick. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Chad. Any other committees for recording tonight? If not, we'll move into presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment via authorization.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Do you have Justin's cell phone number?
I'm going through our city email to see if we can get any.
We do have, under all business, the possible approval to obtain Miller Canfield for legal counsel. I'm going to recommend that we do no action taken on that tonight, because we do have things to discuss and decide that would impact this decision. So if everybody's favorable to that, we will do no action taken on that at this time. We will... let's let Megan do her second quarter budget comparison. We'll kind of go out of order here a little bit, since Justin's not here yet. So Megan, if you'd like to come back and explain that to us.
You all have a review, second quarter budget comparison that ends as of December 31st, 2022. It feels like it was a year ago already, even though it was just two months. So I'm going to take it back to some conversation we had. I think it was around the time we made the budget that there... well, first of all, we established a trust for other post-employment benefits in 2021. At the time that the trust was established, the city determined it would be making quarterly payments via the budget. There's also funds already set aside in a CD that would be invested in the trust so that we're funding these post-employment benefits. So those funds that were tied up in a CD are now able to be transferred to the trust as the city has matured. The amount to be invested in the trust is $128,514.07. What I didn't realize when we created the budget this year is that because this is an expense to submit the money to the trust, we have to cut a check and we have to book it as an expense. It should have been in the budget as an expense, bringing us for a deficit planned budget for this year so that we can effectively get the correct funds into the right place. So I talked to the auditors. They did determine that this is the correct course of action, that we book it as an expense in this year's budget. It will reduce fund balance, which we knew it would do anyways when we talked about fund balance when we were doing the budget. All of this trust fund, post-employment benefit money is included in the fund balance that you've been seeing for a few years now. So going forward, it'll put the money in the trust, it'll reduce fund balance, but that fund balance was a designated purpose for this. So this is just formally moving it into the trust. That's the only amendment suggestion I have for this quarter. Fund balance after the transfer would still be roughly $410,000. That was after the end of last fiscal year. It doesn't include a projection for what fund balance will be after the end of the current fiscal year. We did have a lot of expenses in the water fund at the end of the year, but many of them crossed over into... or I'm sorry, January, so you'll see those in the third quarter. I don't think we're going to need to make budget amendments. I think there's enough movement in other lines in that fund, that cost. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Megan? Thank you very much. Excellent report. You're doing a good job. Let's now move into the... is he here?
No. But you still have to approve for... Yeah. I have a quarter of money coming in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's okay.
Just sorry. There he is. Hi, Justin.
Glad. Starting to worry us. It's nasty out there.
It is pretty bad, yeah.
So I'm not finding that here. You're going to have to show the order of this. Okay, there we go. So I am now, thank you, Mike, looking for...
I move that we approve the following second quarter budget comparison and amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second. Do we have to read all of them?
She was over it for you.
Want to make sure that I wasn't jumping again.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mike that was seconded by you, Bob.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And if... Justin, if you don't mind, I'm going to have us just do this next new business line item, the possible approval of waste disposable agreement, 30-day contract extension. Kevin, if you could come up, and we'll try to shorten this discussion up and maybe do what we have to do tonight, just because of the weather. We do need to see if council is willing to approve that 30-day contract extension. Does anybody have any questions about that extension for Kevin or for Devon?
No.
It's just a matter, really, of extending it till we can decide what else we want to do. So I'm looking for that motion.
I move that we approve a 30-day extension of the trash removal contract set to expire March 6th, 2023, which will extend from March 7th, 2023, to April 5th, 2023, and authorize mayor to sign said agreement.
That's accurate.
So we have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now Kevin's going to just briefly go over the possibilities or options that we have, and we need to do this fairly quickly, so we can't really do no action taken on this, but let's see what Kevin's got to tell us and what you guys would like to hear.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So throughout the years, it seems like Granger has just been extending the current contract and renewing it and prolonging us going out for bids for trash collection or working through the whole process once again. They've kept us at a pretty low rate. We've got a pretty good service rapport with them. They did their job. There was no issues there. Now they're not willing to extend their contract, so we have to make some decisions on what we're going to do moving forward with trash collection. I just happened to get it... receive an email. There is some grant funding opportunities for curbside recycling. If we find an option moving forward with trash collection that could possibly include curbside recycling, there's money available for the purchase and distribution of carts, as well as funding for community outreach and education for curbside recycling. So they're worried about contamination, non-recyclable products making end of the recycling. So I have a copy of what I've discovered in regards to that aspect of the trash collection. We're under no obligation to approve or to do anything with this. I'm just letting you all know that it's out there moving forward. Our conversation could be part of it.
If you have an extra, I can make sure that they have one up in the mailbox, okay? Thank you.
Did Granger give you a new rate for what they want the new contract to be at? Because I...
They didn't give us anything in writing, and I don't know if we're able to bring that to council at this time, being nothing in writing.
Yeah, we have to... I was just curious, but they have to give us a contract to come for it.
It seems to me the best option would be to put it up for bid. With them giving us a 30-day extension on our current contract, hopefully that'll give us enough time to figure out what we're going to do and then get going.
They had mentioned to us that because they... our extensions were at a consumer price index increase, it really hit them hard, because when we went through the recession and such, they weren't getting the increases for where they need to be now, is what's happened. So now they have to go through a contract. They said if we didn't go out with bids, that they're pretty comfortable that for what Scott Truman went to bat for us could start us at $1,244. Now, there's more involved with our contract that goes out to the people, because we do a resolution council approves, and we try to up it a little bit so that we don't have to keep coming back to the residents and doing that part of it. They were pretty factual. If we went out for bids, then they're going to go with the actual price that they figured out, which would be at a $16 level. And so you received from Shirley, the mayor wanted some input without calling other garbage places, what other people are doing. And Kevin's really feels strongly that we should keep a service in it. There was another discussion that... which I was surprised, City of Wasso does not offer a trash service. And then there's also the option of just doing a new contract and not going out for bids and staying with Granger's. So there's three options, and Kevin has the reason why he would like to go out for bids. And one of the reasons... correct me if I'm wrong, one of the reasons with the grant that he brought on the table, there was a subject mentioned as we, as employees, were talking, that if you look, there's several municipalities that are getting a higher rate, but they're getting more service. They're included with a large item, they have recycling, you know, there's different items in there. So Kevin's trying to give you some sight on what we'd be asking, maybe giving the residents more along with having to increase them. That's a... that's just what's going to happen. It doesn't matter where we go. It's going to be a big bump.
Our current rate is $50 per household, and Granger said that if we open up for bids, they're confident that it's going to be around $16 per household. So they made their verbal offer.
They threatened us.
At $12. But we don't know that it's going to be $16 unless we go out for bids, and then that deal goes away. So, I mean, it's really... there's no good answer here for trash collection. The people are going to have to pay more for continued service. I don't think going without is the right call for the city, creating a lot of headaches and code enforcement issues and illegal dumping issues and, you know, along those lines. But, you know, we need to have a discussion about what the city needs to do moving forward, and...
One thing that Granger did say, excuse me, Kevin.
Sure.
At the $1,244 rate, if we did decide just to go ahead with that and not open up for bids, that they would not be able to do that free pickup that we can make.
Community cleanup.
That cleanup week, because last year it cost them $10,000 to do that, just for the city of Perry.
It may have. I mean, everything's gone up, and I'm not...
Yeah. So just to know that that $1,244 would not include a cleanup week like we've had in the past.
In my opinion, we should put it up for bid. In my opinion, we should put it up for bid and get, see if we can get recycling, curbside recycling, and other things too. You know, they said it's one thing on the phone, and we put it up for bid, and then we still want to keep them. We can see you can match us if we're going somewhere else. I can't imagine.
Of course.
I can't imagine the climate that we're in, if it's, if it's close to their number they're at, they're going to say, oh, no, we don't want your business.
They were very comfortable that they were in a very competitive number. And I'm, but again, as Kevin and I were talking this afternoon, even though we purposely didn't go to the other trash, you know, directly to them, there's a possibility that these municipalities are in a contract still in a five years so that they're, they haven't been bumped up yet.
Right, right.
So, you know, we're trying to be, just put everything out on the table for you. And, and so that's where, that Kevin's given his concerns and, and options to look forward because we're at today. But you're right, Granger might, might know better and still be the best once everything is placed.
I would have said the same thing. Oh, we're going to give this today, but if you go out the bid, we're going to, I've been double.
We can't guarantee that that will stay.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. That's what they said. They came out, there are two, two people here that met with us, Scott Truman and the lady that Shirley always talks to on the phone. They were very, you know, they explained in detail, but I think we owe it to our residents to seek what other companies can do for us. Otherwise, we're not really being truly transparent with spending dollars.
Yeah, we have to do that. We also agree too, if we don't have a centralized system or a whatever citywide type, it's going to be.
People can use the curbside pickup, and that's, you know, that's what they want. That's what they're going to need, so.
So you think, Kevin, when we open for bids, we should ask for both with and without curbside?
Yes, I would recommend doing just trash collection and trash collection with curbside recycling. And then when the curbside recycling comes into play, then we can utilize the grant funding through Great Lakes Energy, Environment Energy.
The E-Grants.
Yeah, the E-Grant. So if it increases the total contract cost, then we can out that, and we don't have to do, you know, the curbside recycling. But whatever gets us the best cost for residents is what I feel we should do for the best service.
We don't have a motion prepared, but we would need a motion from council to open for bids. So if somebody feels comfortable with making that motion, I would appreciate it.
I move that we authorize TPW superintendent to put up for bid our weekly trash collection and curbside, and curbside recycling.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Now that Justin's here, we can move into closed session. I need a motion for us to do that.
I need to go backwards. Give me just a second. Okay, I'm ready when you guys are.
I move that council will go into closed session to discuss attorney-client communication.
Second. And we need a roll call for that. Devon, please.
Mindy Gobert?
Yes.
Mike Connell?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Steve Wallace? Oops, sorry. Chad Fuller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we're moving into closed session, 7:33. We, council will move back to.
She has recording. I have recording. Just a second.
Are you ready to?
I'm ready to.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's okay. I'm looking for a motion to go back into open session.
I move that we go back into regular session. Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. Devon, would you take roll call, please?
Mike Connell?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Chad Fuller?
Yes.
And Mindy Gobert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we are back into open session at 7:58 p.m. Our next item on the agenda is possible approval of negotiations.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution, which authorizes the mayor to sign the settlement agreement affecting approval and support for the city's counteroffer contained in the proposed settlement agreement as amended by the city attorney in an effort to reach full resolution of the pending litigation and further authorize the city attorney to execute all other documents to effectuate the terms of the settlement agreement necessary with the federal district court on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion by Mindy, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, let me just bring this up. The roads are not getting any better. It's icy. It's slippery. Megan's gone. She was, she's a little ways away, but Devon's got to drive to Wasso. So the big question becomes this. Do you want to accelerate our meeting by going through the agenda right now and saying what we can do no action taken for tonight and move to our next meeting? Or do you want to just charge our way through this? It's absolutely up to you.
I'm okay with, and early if there's stuff we can handle last time. Just not pressing.
Mayor, I would recommend if it's okay to go ahead and get your membership spoken and the rest. Everything else is, is on schedule. It could delay a little more meeting in my opinion.
Okay. So the SEDP membership is what you're talking about?
I'm thinking so, yeah. Because it's, we got this February 1st of 2023. They're going to be probably wanting.
Okay.
An invoice if council is considered.
Well, let's look at this item under new business, possible approval of SEDP membership. There's information in your packet. You're all very familiar with the SEDP and what they do for us. We have in the past had a $1,000 membership. We've received our, what they call the economic development investment invoice for the same amount. The due date is February 28th. Do we have some discussion on whether or not you want to continue with that membership?
I move that we shall approve the 2023 renewal of the SEDP to partner level for an amount not to exceed $1,000 and authorize the mayor and/or clerk to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So it's okay time-wise for us to do no action taken on the Parks Fund mileage? We have time for that? Devon?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. So if we do no action taken on Parks Fund mileage, the adoption of the ordinance repeal of 378, the ordinance amendment of 374, the first reading of zoning amendment 371, the first reading on the ordinance appeal 372, and the ordinance amendment number 375, and the last item, the discussion of the map for the 2023 Ross to Lose Perry's Pride Award, that can also have no action taken. So that moves us right into any other business that may come before council. Any council discussions and observations? Any other public comment? You're welcome to readdress.
Hi, Jeff Barker again, representing Woodford Woods Cannabis Company. I just was, would ask that we have a chance to review the proposed settlement so that we can be sure that we're prepared for any, for the motions that we need.
The proposed settlement is still a negotiation.
Okay.
So we can't release that until it's actually a settlement.
Okay.
But once that is a signed settlement, I believe, I mean, I'll check with Justin, but I believe at that point you can forehand.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Agenda items for our next meeting, everything that we did no action taken on?
Just one of them.
And what is that?
This one came in after the fact on any other business, and this is regarding, if you want to just go into that because this was about you.
Yeah. This is in regard to the light, the new light at Second Street and Main Street. Finally, we got a contract from Consumers Energy. But in that, they have also a form that needs to be completed referencing a resolution. When you guys made the motion approving me to sign the contract, I thought that's all we'd have to do. But they want Devon to complete a form as city clerk stating what the resolution was approving this. So that's what this next item is. If we could do that, then I can at least send that stuff out back to them and get this wrapped up.
In the process.
Yeah.
I move that we accept and adopt the founding resolution. Resolve that it is hereby deemed advisable to authorize Consumers Energy Company to make changes in the lighting services provided in the standard lighting contract between the company and the city of Perry dated 7/5/2019 in accordance with the authorization for change in the standard lighting contract dated 9/1/1977, herefore submitted to and considered by this council and resolve further that the city clerk be and are authorized to execute such authorization for change on behalf of the city.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. It is still the $100, so it's that end.
It's good news.
Yes, it is. So I believe at the hour of 8:07, the meeting is adjourned.